All right, let's call our meeting to order. If you, everyone, please rise and let's say our pledge together. The flag is repositioned in the, up here on the stage. Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, in due course with liberty and justice for all. Let's pause for a vote of silence, please. Thank you very much. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens. There's time for public comment prior to any action items on the agenda. We ask speakers identify themselves and their home district. We also ask that your comments are limited three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure our meeting is reasonable at length. If you have more information than can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the board's review. Moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. This evening, do we have a motion to adopt our agenda?
A motion.
We have a motion, Ms. Bynum, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Meyer. Any comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Disordered Ms. Gaynor, our school liaison here to address the board this evening, thank you. Yep, get, make it right.
There we go, yeah, that works.
It's good.
That'll work just fine. Okay, good evening, everybody. First of all, I just want to thank everybody in the board for allowing me to attend the School Board Student Liaison Conference that happened just last week. It was a really insightful conference and it taught me a lot about the inner workings of the school board and the formula that like the meetings follow, as well as teaching me a little bit about how to deal with certain issues and some leadership ideas that were gonna help me throughout high school with the rest of my senior year as well as further on. So that was a really beneficial conference. During that conference, I was able to talk with a lot of other student reps and they had some interesting ideas on how they were doing their jobs and how they were making it individual to the communities that they represented. So, one problem that I have dealt with previously throughout this year is that sometimes it's very hard to talk to all the student body. And thinking about it, it's just our 300 some up at the high school, but other student reps are having this problem and they have thousands of people to get to. But so they had some solutions for that and one of that was surveys. And I've tried to do those before and they are a little bit of a hassle to get out and then a little bit more of a hassle to get people to respond to. Because nobody wants to check their emails. But a different rep was able to suggest the idea of doing polls on their Instagram, which is what most of those representatives had an Instagram page for themselves, just as like the general student representative Instagram page. And so they did the polls on that. And they were saying that that was really helpful to them in getting an idea of what the student body was thinking about certain issues. Another thing that was suggested during this meeting was that, um, sorry, I got lost on here, was advertising our school board meetings more. I know that prior to coming to one of these by accident, I didn't know that I could do things. And now I'm here, so that was really beneficial for me. But I don't think a lot of our students realize kind of what these meetings are about or what they can do by coming up here and sharing during public comment in any of those. So that's what one of the student reps was mentioning. He was like, "People don't know enough about these and if all the students came to here, it'd be that much easier to get across the message." So advertising those with either announcements or on an Instagram page, be it the schools or a new one for the student rep, or just having some kind of flyers or something so that students actually know what happens here, was one of those ideas. And then the third idea that I wanted to bring up, and this might not be something that I can implement in the month and a half that I have left, but hopefully I'll be able to help my successor implement it if it's something that they find useful. But they suggested having a committee that reports back to the student rep. Because most, most often the student rep is a junior or a senior at the time. And so, we don't really talk to the eighth graders as much as we should or like the juniors or the sophomores and the freshmen. And all those, all those classes have their individual class counselors and stuff. And they are all doing these amazing fundraisers and all these different activities that they're trying to plan out. And so, I definitely see the senior side of things and I can be like, "Oh, the seniors have this fundraiser." And I get to see the junior side of things a little bit. I don't get to see as much from the younger grades. And so they were suggesting having a representative or two representatives from each of those grades and kind of making a council of that who could report back to the student rep and kind of be like, "Hey, this is what our grade's doing." And so that might be something that we can implement in the upcoming months. And so that, those were just a few of those ideas. It was a really beneficial conference. I think that's something that everybody should go to. And then I just wanted to give another thank you on behalf of our student body. A few weeks ago, we were able to have our Powerpuff Football game, our pep rally, our homecoming football game. And then our homecoming, it's just a week of events, it was fantastic. And the principal and the amazing staff at Rappahannock and the SCA all made as possible because the weather really wanted to shut down everything. And so, like Ms. Atkins did amazing for us by being able to move that football game up a day so we could still have it and therefore still have our pep rally outside and have our Powerpuff game. Like that didn't get canceled ugly because we didn't have to move it to that day instead. And, so that was fantastic. And then the SCA made sure that whether it rained or it was sunny or it was below freezing, we were gonna have homecoming. They had everything set up, the tents and the heaters and the fire pits and everything. And so, a big shout out to them. And then, like I said, all of these events were fantastic and we had so much spirit happening during that week. We had some very loud senior boys during pep rally, which was great. And I just wanted to thank everybody for making that happen. And then I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of insight on what's happening in our future. So, so far, there, the SE, the SCA has our winter formal planned for December 4th, first winter formal we've ever had. So that's very exciting. And we will have heaters again, which is fantastic. It's gonna be cold. And then everybody else has a few different fundraisers happening for the different classes. Hopefully we'll have some more pep rallies happening. The library renovation committee is going out on Thursday to go look at the libraries at Eastern View Public High School and at Cole Pepper High School to look at those and kind of see what their layout looks like. Pride Clubs have started up and they're going to continue and those are going really well, a lot of people enjoy them. Leo Club, FCA, NHS, and a few individuals all have their different service projects happening this holiday season. There's a lot going on, you're gonna see a lot of drives for different things happening. And most of those clubs are working with Ms. Cox on getting supplies to send up to a few different places up in West Virginia for Christmas. And so there's gonna be drives for like clothing, Christmas toys for kids, and hygiene kits as well as a few other small items. And then overall, I just think our school has a lot of projects happening in November, December, and it looks like it's gonna be very good. That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much, yes, yes. We're gonna miss you. So you're gonna be with us in December, right?
Yep, I'm gonna be here.
And how does this success or happen? Is that chosen from amongst your body, from the student body?
There's that, an application process that guidance usually puts out and then is selected from there, so.
Yep.
Well, encourage whoever follows you, that'd be great too. And great ideas. So I'm glad you got a chance to take part in that.
Yeah, it was a really great conference. It was like super amazing to be all around those people and all the issues we talked about and stuff.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a couple of special recognitions this evening. And the first one will be for the family of Sergeant Sisk. If you, if you could get to that door and come up here on the stage, please, that's.
So there was a gentleman that came here several years ago to the Rappahannock County Sheriff's Office and he was assigned as a school resource officer. And he had tremendous impact upon students and staff to this day and you still remember, still honored, and still treasure. So the school board thought it proper to allow us to pass a resolution to honor that gentleman. Tonight, we have his wife and his oldest daughter, who may have spotted his footsteps, who are here to receive the resolution. Rappahannock County Public Schools Resolution Honor School Resource Officer, Sergeant James Anthony Tony Sisk. Whereas Sergeant James Anthony Tony Sisk was a former school resource officer for Rappahannock County Public Schools, Washington, Virginia, and whereas school resource officers work with the school administrator, security staff, and faculty on developing comprehensive safety plans to ensure schools are safe places for students to learn. And whereas Sergeant James Anthony Tony Sisk has made a lifelong impact on all these officials he has encountered and dedicated countless hours to ensure their safety and well-being. Whereas he was a positive influence for students, staff, and community who he vows to protect, honor, and serve. Whereas the support he has provided students will positively impact generations for years to come. And now, therefore, be it resolved, Rappahannock County School Board recognizes Sergeant James Anthony Tony Sisk for his service to students, parents, and community of Rappahannock County, Virginia. Being further resolved, this expression of appreciation and gratitude, he made part of the permanent records of the county, that a copy of the resolution be presented to the family of Sergeant James Anthony Tony Sisk by the Rappahannock County School Board this night, day of November 2021.
Thank you, thank you. Next, we're gonna ask Ms. Susie Stoltz and if she would please come to the same stage, please.
So another special recognition tonight is for Ms. Stoltz, who was our Wobblers Center Coordinator. As we were exploring the feasibility of even offering integrated care services through mental health services and physical health services and it's been quite the journey. After we were just talking about it, in fact, the way this sort of happened was Susie called me in the office because she had read about something in the paper that we were exploring this option. And she told me about her background as a pediatric nurse practitioner. I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, are you interested in helping us? Can you come on board?" And she was like, "Hi," that day. And she's been putting so much work and effort into getting this off the ground in such a short period of time, it was pretty amazing.
It's a great accomplishment for the schools and the students. I think we, of course, we haven't realized how great the impact is yet, but it's so important to have the right person at the begin setting this. What we wanted to do was make sure you knew how much we appreciate it. Which you've done, so we have a small. Anyway, thank you.
We need to know project creation is sort of over at the initial implementation she's staying on as a steering committee member for the entire project. So we're gonna still have her involved.
All right, thank you. Here, there's so many, so many folks that are so valuable to what we do and it's hard sometimes to figure out, you know, what's the right thing to do. Anyway, it's good to say thanks to folks that step up to the plate. At this time, let's see, donations, Madam Clerk.
Hey, I have several to report. Janet Long donated blank badge tags. Beach Spring Fruit Stand donated pumpkins to the horticulture class. Shelley Cook donated $250 to the student council homecoming. Four Shacks donated $100 to athletics. And the following donations are to the baseball program in memory of James Arthur. Call Pepper Little League donated $100. Eugene and Donna Back donated $50. Settle Construction donated 500. Joseph and Maria McDonald donated $50. And Bonnie and Earl Keys donated $25. And Darlene Pinker donated $25.
All right, and there, the donations are accepted during the consent agenda. Thank you. Moving on, is there a motion to adopt the minutes from our October 12th meeting?
So moved.
We have a motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Uben, is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Mr. Grove, have you had opportunity to review the bills?
I have, and everything looks to be in tip-top shape.
Thank you. At this point, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Uben, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Bynum, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Disordered Dr. Grimsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The first report of the superintendent tonight is the Commit to Be Fit yearly update. So at this time, I'm going to ask the Commit to Be Fit team, Mrs. Jackie Teedrick, Holly Jenkins, and Jeremy Gates to the podium.
Good evening, how is everyone tonight?
Healthy, yay!
Love to hear that.
It was 70 degrees.
So I know every time we stand up here, you're probably wondering, are they gonna make us do jumping jacks and squats?
Let's do it.
Woo, we can! In the spirit of keeping this brief, I thought we would forego that, but if you wanna do exercise, you know I'm never gonna say no. So, tonight, we wanted to talk about our school year 2021, which was last year. It seems like ages ago, so much, so much has happened since then. But we wanted to do a quick review just to let you know what really happened during that school year. Our theme was a broader scope. And cheerfully, when we picked out our yearly themes back in 2016, we had no idea what broader scope actually meant in terms of school year 2020, 2021. Exactly. And it really encompassed getting more into mindfulness, into working with students on positive thinking and positive self-esteem, positive affirmations. So we did really expand and take on a broader scope, but definitely in a different way than we really ever imagined. So, very quickly, as Dr. Grimsley announced, this is Jackie Teedrick, I'm Holly Jenkins. And last year, we also had Amanda Butler, the amazing Mandy Butler. And Jen Atkins, did a wonderful job in ABL. And of course, Dr. Grimsley, who was the one that really created the team that had the, the idea and secured the grant from the Path Vendett, excuse me, Path Foundation. So, that's the team.
So, we take three prongs, I, just refresh your memory cafeteria, community, and classroom. So we'll start with cafeteria as our first prong that we focused on in school year 2021. So, we actually held some kids cooking club classes. And we did it after school. And we did it with the grades K1, 2nd, 5th, 6th, and 7th. And Ms. Kim Vest helped us with that and Ms. Diviana. And they made smoothies, they made some little pizzas and just some. We had these, we had this cooking cart that we purchased and it's really nice, you can get 10 people around it. And so, it has a actual little oven that has a little hot plate you can, you know, do all kinds of stuff with. So, we did that for the kids and you can, as you can see, they really enjoy getting in there, rolling their sleeves up and making something yummy. So, for the cafeteria as well, we did a staff farmer's market, which we're gonna be doing that next week. Upon us so quickly, I'm planning that now and along with Holly and Jeremy. So, that's something that came about. We wanted to do something for the staff and just organically name a farmer's market. And it's probably the, one of the best things that we've done as far as the cafeteria prong and just providing healthy food to our staff members. So we have two, we're gonna try to stick with that in November, which is next week, our Thanksgiving farmer's market. And we'll have one in the spring. And it was just an opportunity for us to show how thankful we are to our staff members and the lot of stress that they've endured with this weird year. It just seems like that was just the right thing to do. And we gave them $20 in tickets to shop. And it benefited the local farmers too, which was nice. And you can see the vendors up there that participated in that. And also, Ms. Mandy, she visited the 3rd grade classrooms last year and she went over to mobplate.org where how kids should get those five ingredients or nutrients in their diet. And she did activities with them inside the classroom. And she focused on 3rd grade last year. And then the, the other prong that we do is the classroom. And, you know, we talked, Mandy and Holly and I, last year, we really had to regroup and talk about what was important with the pandemic that, you know, we, we left, you know, the year before that in the spring, we were shut down. And we thought, "Oh, by the fall, we're gonna be good to go. We'll come back, no mask, it'll be like normal, right?" And here we are, we still have masks. So we really wanted to focus on some of the, you know, the trauma level of just the emotional and the trauma that happens with the kids that have to stay home and just, just the stress of all of it. So, we practiced mindfulness. I went into the ABL, I've worked with those kids and practiced mindfulness and taught them how to self-regulate just by being in the moment and using their breathing techniques and things like that. So, and that was something they could take home and other places outside the ABL and the classroom. And Holly came in and she did positive affirmation and positive self-esteem activities with the kids. Again, that was part of our approach was to really focus on the social, emotional well-being of our kids and get them some tools that they could put in their toolbox that they could use to help with the stress of the times and the self-regulation. And so, when we came back last year, we had this, you know, we had to wear a mask and it was just, it kinda organically came about where how can we get the kids moving? Plus, get a mask break. And so, we launched the Daily 15, which is thankful with our principals at both buildings, they, they were on board. And so, classes went outside, they were able to keep their distance and make a walk of track. And here at the elementary school in the back where the playground is, they tracked their steps in their Daily 15s. And we had like a, kind of a competition among teams. And we gave away some action-based learning like equipment they can use in their classroom. So it's kind of an incentive for the kids to, the teachers to be on board and plus the kids really liked it, as you can see here, they're outside. Some of them really didn't wanna walk, they wanted to run. So, we let them run.
Absolutely, in fact, we, with the Daily 15, like Jackie mentioned, we did ask the teachers to kind of track how often they went outside. And simply for each time the class went out, they put up a sticker next to their name on this bulletin board. And we calculated that roughly one 15-minute period, because some, of course, were running, some were walking fast, and others were just a simple stroll. But we figured it was roughly about a mile each time the class went out. And so, we calculated during the competition, which ran from September to Thanksgiving break, that the classes together walked over 1,200 miles, which is roughly the distance between Rappahannock and Key West. So, it was very cool. And that's just by class, that's not by individual student. We should say, this original idea came from Ms. Bynum a couple of years ago, in fact.
The daily mile, right?
The daily mile, absolutely.
I'm so glad to hear that.
And however, we felt the daily mile sounded kind of intimidating.
Yeah, it is, this is a good step.
So the Daily 15 and with the, the need for mask breaks, it just, it was a perfect timing. And even after the competition, when you drive past the schools, you'll still see classes outside taking their Daily 15, getting a mask break. So even without the incentive, it's still continuing on today.
It's great when the activity becomes the incentive, I love that.
Right, for sure.
Really nice.
Yeah, even this year, we look forward to the Daily 15. You know, we teach a class first block and they're asking, "Are we gonna take a mask break, can we go outside?" They wanna move, you know, that's a really good thing. And so also, we had remote learning, so we had to, you know, have a database for things that kids could do at home, physical activities that kind of aligned with the classroom and with the COVID safety mitigation procedures as well, pre-K through 3 and 4 and 7.
Absolutely, we, before COVID, of course, encouraged students to be up out of their seats, purposely moving but running around and touching things and things that you really can't do when you're living in a COVID-minded world. So we had to modify a lot of brain breaks so that we didn't have the large movements throughout the classroom, but the kids still could get movement, could still have that mental break, cross the midline and such. So we did create a series of videos geared towards pre-K through 3 and also 4 to 7, as well as printed instructions, which is in the middle of the screen there. So the teachers had the option either doing the format on paper or just playing the video and then our remote students could follow along with the videos.
And then last year, also, we had Wonderful Wednesday Day Camp, which was a huge success. And we were asked to participate in that, so we came up with activities for the campers. And it used, it involved physical activity and some mindfulness activities. Each week, we would send Ms. Capsa that. And it was student-led by the mentors, so. And then we did Every Kid Healthy Week last year. We used our first block class, our personal fitness and nutrition class. And high school students play an active role in promoting that wellness activity for the little ones. So, we had our first block create these videos. It was Mindful Monday, Tasty Tuesday, Wellness Wednesday, Thoughtful Thursday, and Fitness Friday. And so, we kind of made it fun and made it relevant to the, to the little ones. And anyway, these, these videos were shown in pre-K through 7th classrooms and they were, it was shared online with remote students as well. But that was a lot of fun making, having our kids involved in these videos, our high school kids. We had a lot of laughs and fun.
Especially the Fitness Friday, which featured a dance theme. We even got Dr. Grimsley dancing, Principal Swindler dancing. It was, yeah, a lot of fun. If we had more time, we would have played that one.
La, 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 moving on.
All right, so our third prong is community. And with community, one milestone that we reached last year, which isn't on the slide, but back in May, we celebrated 175th edition of our weekly newsletter. 175 tips, recipes, and so on and so forth. So, we're just kind of very thankful that we still have an audience of folks that are continuing to follow the weekly newsletters. All right, so, we did move our fitness more to a virtual platform last year. We offered a virtual cow, which is. We offered a virtual COW, which is Challenge of the Week. And with that, we offered each week either a different challenge, which included an exercise routine, or it could be something as simple as try a new type of physical activity you've never done before. So we tried to switch it up and make it something that everyone really could participate in. We also had a virtual Turkey Chat. This was the first time we had a virtual format. And we actually had the largest attendance ever, one hundred and twenty-seven participants. So that was a lot of fun. It is coming back this year. More information is coming shortly. And we did have a little bit of in-person fitness, but we collaborated with Stonewall Abbey Wellness in Sperryville. And at their facility, they were able to offer twelve weeks of three classes a week for forty-five minutes of group fitness, which included cardio, core, body weight exercises, stretching, and we called it educator hour. So that was very beneficial for our staff. It was for staff only. We also offered a staff wellness portal, which was through Fit Thumb, and it was specifically designed for our RCPS staff. And it allowed us to track nutrition, our food intake, as well as our physical activity, provided challenges where you could collect points, and also different rewards and even little videos, motivational videos. So that was beneficial for staff as well. Senior Balance Class, this is something that we, we did offer live for Rapid Home Members, and it was held at the Washington Schoolhouse. It is offered twice a month and combines both balance and strength training. And all the participants have been given an eight-page booklet, which includes all the exercises that we do during class, so that they can do that at home as well. And it's a lot of fun, yeah, definitely very beneficial. So last year, we really didn't get a chance to present much, given the pandemic. However, we did have the opportunity to present at Work Fairfax Community College, where we did a presentation on kinesthetic strategies to create green stars in the classroom. And that was a great honor to be able to present both in person and virtually to educators all around the region. All right, so we wanted to give you a little sneak peek about this school year. So if we could, I'd get to the next slide. I'd like to introduce Jeremy Gates. Jeremy Gates is our new action-based lab facilitator. And you can see from the pictures, he has amazing energy. He's such a welcome addition to the team. The kids absolutely love him. And he has a lot of great, fresh ideas. So we're just thrilled that he is now a full-fledged member of our team. Also this year, we're doing Harvest of the Month. And Harvest of the Month is made possible also with our regional farmer's school liaison, Elizabeth Beeling. And that position is funded through the Pat Foundation and No Kid Hungry. And she comes in once a month and talks about the harvest of the month with the kids in the ABL. And we do fun experiments with the food, they get to taste test the food. And also Jackie has actually made really fun creations out of each of the Harvest of the Month foods. So we had a crab out of apples and an octopus out of bell peppers so far. Can't wait to see what she does with cabbage.
Yeah, I don't know. And then of course Jeremy.
Yes, and Jeremy. Jeremy, in his intro slide, had the, yes, the teeth, which is a marshmallow with apple slices. Perfect. All right, so we are currently in the midst of our Transformation Challenge, which is the twelve-week at-home strength training program. We have had one hundred and fifty-nine participants sign up for it. And each month, the participants get a booklet of exercises that they're going to be doing throughout the month. And then each week, we email them their weekly routine. So that's, it's been a lot of fun. Right now, we're on week ten, believe it or not, we're almost at the end. So it's, it's been well received. Our ABL evaluation. So we are conducting research currently to look at the link between the movement stations and ABL compared to our COW scores. Specifically, the foundations we're examining right now are balance, cross lateralization, gross motor, then also vestibular development or proprioception. And we're in fairly early stages of it, so I look forward to reporting more on that at a later meeting. And upcoming, so we have a few things coming up on the horizon. We just received notice about a week ago that we are presenting at SHAPE's Annual National Convention, and that's Society of Health and Physical Educators. So we are really looking forward to that. That's a hard one to get into, so. It's going to be in New Orleans.
Oh my God.
Yeah, they, yeah, they pick these awful, you know, destinations pretty comfortably.
Do you need a driver?
Chaparral, yeah. Yeah, and that's going to be in April. So we're just, we're thrilled and honored to have been picked up for this particular one. It's the big conference. And we're going to also probably get a lot of really great ideas to bring back as well.
Yeah, that's kind of where COVID kind of put a halt to that, because we really got a lot of fresh ideas and learned a lot on these conferences, even though the destination sometimes can be really nice, but we really do truly enjoy going on these conferences and learning and bringing it back to our community. So we really have missed that, so we're looking forward to it.
Yes, our last conference, we learned about the Free Hugs Movement, which
No hugs.
can't do now. But, but yeah, we do get a lot of great ideas. We're also going to be doing a lot of taste testing in our school cafeterias coming up throughout the school year. Mr. Gates, he's such a good team player. He has agreed to wear a banana costume when we're going to be doing some smoothies as well. So we look forward to some fun pictures coming. As Jackie mentioned, staff farmer's market is taking place next Thursday. We will have the flyer out tomorrow, so you'll all receive a flyer as well for that. And then the virtual Turkey Chat, registration is now open on our website, rapc2bf.com. And it is free and there will be prizes. So I hope that you all will have an opportunity to participate this year. And of course, there's going to be a lot more coming. But we all want to really just thank you for your continued support. Just having your support has made such a difference. And truly, we couldn't do it without you. So thank you.
We hope to see you at the farmer's market next week, too.
Yes.
So next, you said next Thursday?
Thursday.
Which is the eighteenth?
Yes, sir.
Guess where we're, all right, well, some of us are in Williamsburg on the eighteenth.
But you're not.
I'm going to go to the farmer's.
So you'll have to excuse us. By the way, you say, you know, when you go, you harvest things from other folks. You know, I've watched you all in action at the BSBA conference. There's people that are harvesting a lot of ideas from you all, right? Because of the work and the success and a very healthy record in our county, by the way. So anyway, well done. And maybe they'll give us a Zoom capability for your New Orleans.
Oh, yeah, that'd be fun.
That would be kind of neat to dial in and watch.
Yes, well, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Any questions, anybody?
Yeah, just one primarily, the senior program, the senior balance program.
Yes.
Have you given any thought to going to the senior center and doing that?
We, we did offer something at the senior center, it was two years ago perhaps. We did it through Lift, which was in collaboration with the Virginia Tech program, where we did strength training specifically for seniors.
Okay.
The purpose of that particular program, though, was for eight weeks to really teach individuals how to be able to work out on their own. So the goal was to get them able to do it. And as far as I know, up until COVID, they were at least continuing it. But it's certainly something.
They're starting to meet back again, so I was just wondering if it's possible.
Yeah, we could check into that.
Absolutely.
Maybe they could even bring them to, if they do transport, so it's something to talk about.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Yes.
I was just wondering one question about, how often do you do the tastings? You said there's a person from, who is the one who comes in to do that?
Yes, she's our regional farm to, to school liaison. And she works at the different schools in the region, and we see her once a month right now.
So it's Rappahannock, Orange, Hall Pepper, Falkier Medicine. There's the regions around us, and she goes to all those schools. And so she's able to pop in with us as her schedule allows.
Is that through a cooperative extension or is it?
The Rappahannock Rapidant.
Oh, the community services, okay, yeah, great.
So, yeah, it's been really, been really great, and kids have really enjoyed her. What do they call her?
Well, they were calling her the bell pepper lady.
Yeah, the bell pepper lady. She said, oh, you're the bell pepper lady. Anyway.
Great, all right. Thanks very much, thanks.
I'm sorry, for anyone that is watching online, our, your booklet is available on our website as well. So you're all encouraged as well to check that out.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Still don't know when they find time to do all this stuff. It's amazing.
It's amazing. That team is incredible. Okay, the next item is the Comprehensive Planning Process update. Just wanted to give you an update of where we are. This is the year that we have to go through the planning process to update the comprehensive plan for the next five years. So the, the goal is to have that done at the end of this school year for adoption and then implementation, July one of 2022. So just to remind you, we are still using the Profile for Virginia Graduate Conceptual Framework. A lot of our processes and different areas and components of the comprehensive plan still apply, and it's still aligned with the direction that the state content is, is going with that conceptual framework. It's still very pertinent, and we didn't want to let go of that conceptual framework. We also are viewing everything through an equity and social, emotional learning lens and ensuring that we have fair and equal opportunities for all of our students and also addressing the social, emotional learning impact, especially post-COVID. These are the comprehensive planning teams in each of those tenants that were on the conceptual framework. So Content Knowledge, which is led by Jen Wissinger, Crystal Smith, and Lisa Gates. Career Prep and Workplace Readiness, which will be led by Mr. Seward and Ms. Pond at the high school. The Financial Planning Team, myself and Ms. Witt, as well as our SIFT team, that, that work that has already started since the, the end of last year, will continue in with, as SIFT is finishing up their final report of what they found out in the different Panther teams that we had. And that will then inform our comprehensive planning process. And that steering team will come back together with that report to draw insights from it. And we also have another community member who also wanted to join that team, so. Student Community Engagement and Civic Responsibility, that team is going to be led by Courtney Atkins and Holly Jenkins. Recruitment and Retention, Dr. Robin Bolt and Michelle Berta. And School Community General Wellness will be Dr. Johnson and Jackie Teedrick. So really good leaders in each of these areas. And I met with the entire group too, just so we could solidify and anchor our process and the planning going forward and what tools to use, some strategic measures for force field analysis and things against our, our current goals, our objectives, our previous plan, and how we move forward as teams to make sure we are efficient and also streamlining that process and keeping it universalized between all the teams. So we had a training session on that too during our weekly cabinet meeting. Here are the planning team members. So we had some really good responses from the community who wanted to participate with us, and we have some wonderful people on here that I think will add a lot of value as we're going through these different analyses in the process. So just talking a little bit about the planning process here, really it's three steps, if we were going to simplify it. Communicating with teammates, we're in step one right now, that's the timeline at the bottom. Communicating with teammates, so if you haven't, if you were on that list and you haven't heard, you should hear very, very shortly as those were generated. We had our training session just within the last couple of weeks, so you should hear very soon. The, we're going to review the process and original plan documents to see where we've been and what that plan looked like and decide where we need to go next in each of the teams. Then step two is going to be review data elements, conduct a force field analysis on the goals that still apply, and also any of those objectives that we still feel like need to be implemented. Develop survey questions. Part of the comprehensive planning process in each of those areas will be to develop survey questions to make sure we're gathering stakeholder input as well. Very similar to the way we did our reopening planning process last year. All of the teams get some input on what they need to know from the community and what they would like feedback on as they develop those goals. And then it'll be one survey, so it's not going to be all these like seven teams, different surveys going out that will kind of bombard everybody. So part of the process, there's a tool that we use to guide everybody through the planning process, and then as they're going through too, they can determine questions that they would like to ask the community and different stakeholder groups. And then in step three, review the survey data, apply your equity lens, and that should be done kind of throughout as well. And develop strategic goals and action planning steps throughout for a five-year time period, and also shorter-term action steps within each of those goals. So that's a very simplified, three steps of the process, but there's a lot that goes into each piece that the, the team leaders have all of the tools to guide through that. So the, the goal is to have the comprehensive plan draft posted for review at the April twelfth school board meeting, and then have a public hearing at the May meeting for then adoption at the June meeting, so that then it would be implemented. So we have plenty of time to get that in front of everyone who would like to see it, have time to review it, collect feedback on it, and then have a finalized version for you to adopt in June. Okay? Any questions?
We did say that we were going to be able to, the SIFT, the SIFT objectives were to produce a report. And so as the individual Panther teams produce a report, the SIFT, the core team of SIFT will consolidate those things and, and create something that hopefully you'll be able to see before the next meeting. But it's a lot to consume. And, and, and so it's going to require, you know, it's going to take a while to consume it and understand it. But I believe, just from what I've seen on the team that I'm on, it'll, I think it should do a benefit to the community to get everybody understanding the current state of where we stand with the school budget and all the parameters that affect it. So it's going to be an interesting read, it's going to, it's going to be exhausting because there's a lot of attachments related to studies. And my team, for example, is all about numbers. So it's, anyway, I hope to, I hope that you'll be able to see it before the next board meeting and, and have time to start to consume it so that we can all see, see what we're managing as a community.
My question was about, so these are great topics, so these six topics, there's a lot of, I can see overlapping areas, you know, contact knowledge to career planning to, and, and I'm wondering, like, how do you, how do you address, like, you know, are we going to meet some sort of, are we going to talk among the committees as well before we make a plan? Because we could be redundant, or we could maybe be not considering it important, for example, you know, thinking about like, especially like.
Absolutely. So each, each tool, and I'm big on templates and tools that you fill in as you're going through the planning process. So each team has a very similar template, and if there's redundancy there, that's okay.
There should be, I think.
There will be, you know, if we're doing it right, there should be. In fact, all these places should be. Right.
For sure.
So as the teams complete their work, the steering team, which is the, the chairs of each of those teams, then get together and bring it all together. And then we can look for those redundancies and overlaps and be sure that we're creating goals or putting it in an end document that makes a lot of sense. And if there, there's overlap, and depending on the format we want to use, it will depend a lot on what we find out in the comprehensive needs assessment and when we're looking at the data and where we need to go with that. So formatting will be a critical piece of that too, as we look at the design and what would be most consumable, but also actionable and operationalization, you know.
Because you could see where, you know, if you're doing a five-year plan, like, maybe loaded on the early end could be some more of the content pieces perhaps, and the later end could be some of the career prep, for example, you know, just thinking, you know.
Right, and each of those.
You can't do the job before you know the stuff.
Yeah, and we've been using the same conceptual framework for a while, so it'll kind of have a natural, I think, format that we can look at and also design goals in each area, because there are some that are very pertinent to that area to move it forward, and it might be a focus. And it might be a focus for content, for, for example, to focus on the areas and tenants that the state says need improvement or your school improvement plan look at, what does your data say? There's a lot of questions in there that we'll have to answer that may not be exactly pertinent to like career prep and those things. So as we go through that, but until we go through the process, we don't, we won't really know until we see it. But it should be a good learning process for everyone involved. And we'll, we'll try to involve the community as much as possible and get that survey out. That's going to be really important too, to, to measure the level of interest, engagement, and, you know, just make sure we have that buy-in for our plan, it's going to take everybody, so.
How soon is the survey to be developed?
That, we plan to do that, survey questions done by February and to have that out early February timeframe.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Item 4.3, it's November, it's gearing up for budget season. So there's a draft budget calendar for your review and hopefully adoption. There it is. And this is the same format we generally use. The joint meeting is to be determined typically. We do that at our February meeting. If there's interest, okay, so, and Mr. Curry has this as well to get in front of his board, which I think he's put those dates and aligned them as well. So those are the dates pertinent to our budget planning process.
Any questions? Thanks for putting that together.
And then the last item, 4.4, is our monthly wellness check. I do want to put some language in front of you here too, that per section 2001i of the ARP Act, an interim final rule, we just have to make note of the fact that the SRR3 plan, that's in our health plan, that's on the website every six months, should be discussed or revised. At this point, we are not recommending any revisions at all to that plan. But if there's anyone in the public or any, any school board member that wishes to address any, anything in those plans, that can be discussed at any school board meeting. So I just want to be sure we have the language there to be compliant with our funding. Pull up the presentation. So last month, this is what our dashboard looked like when we reported. And it's here now. Well, we did see a slight uptick and you heard from our liaison that we did have many activities. We had the Halloween holiday, homecoming. So not as large of a spike as you might have thought might happen, so. But keeping a, a close eye on that, it's definitely an increase over what the high school was seeing, especially holding zero for two weeks. And that's the chart. As a state, it, the case rates were coming down quite a bit, starting to plateau and even out a little. Still unsure of what the winter might bring at this point. And as a locality, we were kind of seeing an up and down. This is the past 90 days and more of an uptick in the recent, recent couple of weeks here. And here's the entire pandemic chart as well.
The locality data, that's regional or just Rappahannock?
This is Rappahannock.
Just the county?
County, that's a whole county, yep. And this is all available, you can go to the VDH site and to the locality COVID pandemic site and you can pull up all of these for different localities and look at different date ranges and things. Here's the community transmission data that our Rappahannock Rapidan Health District sends to us every week as school leaders to look at our transmission rates. Rappahannock is, has been downgraded to substantial with the trend data. And we're in the low for our total new cases per 100,000, which, you know, that rate can change day to day if just a couple of cases can throw that up or down. So this is just the chart that our, our, our HD puts out on their site. So substantial, Madison and Rappahannock are at the substantial range. So coming down, we want to see that get to the green, which would be really lovely.
But everything around us is going up.
Everything around us is still high, Culpeper, Focia, Orange is in the high transmission range.
I think we have to.
Be careful.
Continue to watch that. It's really important.
Of course, the data is very, very important. Here's the case quarantine comparison chart at school district level. So as you can see in October, the case rates across the board were higher than they are right now compared to last month at this time. So they're coming down, but they're still, it's still there, obviously. So it's very important to, to watch. A lot of attention on the parallel pandemic with mental health. So with our students, we're, we're really working to address and, and keep an eye on current and post-trauma caused by the pandemic, it's still ongoing. And we're seeing a lot of impacts on our, our students and families, so that's important to, to keep in mind. There's still inconsistencies in structure due to quarantining protocols. And when we're putting kids out and it's inconsistent back and forth and you don't know when you might be exposed and then have to stay home for 10 days and then you're switching to distance, and it's, it's really cumbersome for everybody, families, teachers, students. And it's, you know, we didn't think we would still be at that point at here. So there's a lot of conversation among superintendents in the region and across the state to, to really look at that data very carefully about quarantining our healthy kids and which percentage actually do become symptomatic after exposure in a school setting where mitigation is in place. Because if we do all the mitigation and we know that transmission levels are really low in a school setting, so why also quarantine them if they're healthy and only 2% to 4%, which is the data we've collected, actually become symptomatic? Are we doing much more harm to students and families with economic hardship and, and social emotional stressors and all academic impacts? That has to factor in, especially when there is no concerted effort at the state level to look at that data at this point. So superintendents are really speaking up and say, you at least need to look at this and develop a system where we're being mindful of that. Because that seems to be the root of a lot of the stressors that everyone is feeling right now. So if we can take care of that, focus in on, yes, being very transparent about exposures and making sure we're communicating properly and mitigating. But if we're doing all those things, then there should be some alleviation of that forced quarantining of healthy people. So, and that's what we're, we're looking at, it's causing huge staffing shortages at schools. We don't have too much of an issue with that, but big schools are really struggling with, with those protocols. And then, yeah, so anyway, that's causing a major, a major issue.
The superintendents around Virginia are, they have a voice with VDH because VDH is who's levying these requirements on us for quarantine, for example.
Correct, so the Department of Education and, and the Department of Health, their answer to us initially was, well, CDC is looking at it. But our question was, well, what are they looking at if the health districts or DOE or nobody is collecting that data? So we went ahead and collected ourselves, just to give a canvas of that. And half of the districts that we surveyed said we don't really have that data or have a way to correlate it. But those who did had the same number, it was between 2% to 4% on average. So if that's the case, then it, it begs further discussion and please look at it because it's really damaging to everybody right now. Especially now that the vaccine is available, we have good mitigation and all these things are in place. So something has to give somewhere, there's no off-ramp for any of it. And it's just, I think it's just causing so much additional stress.
Yeah, and it does seem like there's differences in, you know, someone's wearing a N95 mask versus a. You could, you could think about regulations to where someone could be more protected with, if they're in quarantine, but they're feeling well. You could imagine, if you could talk to VDH about it, that you could have someone successfully in class.
Exactly, especially if you say.
And have breath to themselves pretty well.
Exactly, if you've been exposed, then we recommend, which masking is right now.
Yeah, what masking is meant would mean you can kind of off that masking.
So, I don't know. Right, right, so that's the argument is, you know, we're throwing every, everything at it, but, you know, at some point can we scale back on at least the quarantine piece with the data we're collecting? It does not, it appears to be doing way more harm than any good to students and families. So please look at it.
Students and families. I appreciate you saying that, the whole family is stressed with.
Well, and teachers, it's stressing our teachers because now they're trying to make up work for students who aren't there and keep up with the remote and now, that, it's, it's insane. It's just causing a lot of stress on everybody. So something's got to give at some point. And that's what we're asking them is like, just give us an endpoint, give us some off-ramp. Like what, what is that metric that's going to be the number that you can say, okay, at least we're not going to do the quarantine anymore, but we can keep these, or whatever it is. But they need to look at it.
Enhancing mitigation for quarantine people.
Yeah, exactly.
So have you gotten any feedback at all? Are they at least affirming that they're considering the?
Yes, they, they are hearing us. I'm presenting at the VSBA conference with COSARS about it next week. So hopefully we get some more traction, Region 4, which I, Vice Chair of that group too is very interested in pushing, pushing that along too. So we have a lot of, everybody's saying the same thing, we're, we're seeing it statewide, please look at it, but also collect the data so you have the, the actual, the actual data to make the arguments.
Is the fact that a, a student or teacher is vaccinated, reduce their quarantine time?
No, the vaccination status, and that's another point that they're saying, well, if you're vaccinated, then you don't have to worry about quarantining. But with our data, we're showing, well, our vaccinated people are getting it and still are able to spread it, so shouldn't they quarantine too? That's the logic. So it doesn't make a lot of epidemiological sense. So either do it for everybody or let's scale back and concentrate on those who are becoming symptomatic, enhancing mitigation for those people and allowing them to still be at school, be at work, like they did with the healthcare folks, you know, they did the same thing to make sure they could be there. So it's a, it's a huge stressor for schools across the state and I'm sure across the nation, so. So more, the mental health toll, we talked so much about that, but the new normal, the, there were limited opportunities for performing arts, sporting events and things like that, that we've, that have definitely taken a toll. Family household stressors that we have no control over, of course, with the different impacts that the pandemic's had on families. With staff, definitely without a doubt impacting morale. They're experiencing complete COVID fatigue and fatigue from all of this, all the extra planning it takes and the just stress of keeping up with it all. And then just the uncertainty of no endpoint. It feels like this is going to be forever because nobody is defining a clear exit to this. So I think that adds to anxiety and stress too. There are so much divisiveness in the community, state, nation with all the, with education becoming the forefront of politics, which is never a great thing for us. The fear and anxiety related to COVID, the coverage issues, you know, so all of those things just add up. And it's a stressful time, very stressful time in education. So addressing mental health has been a focus. So for students, the return of sports and events, more opportunities for those fun activities, social events. At least the state did give us some leeway there and had those things be permissible because I think they were absolutely essential and vital this year to students. We've hired a performing arts facilitator that has been such a huge gap in our services and such a needed, necessary outlet for our students. So our person, Henry Mason, who we hired and put out a release, has started last week and is getting acclimated to the school family. We are hopeful for the return of a spring musical, more drama, improv, vocal opportunities, band support, all sorts of things. He is literally the Renaissance man of performing arts. We couldn't pick a, we couldn't have picked a more perfect person for this. There's additional mental health supports available for students and staff this year through our Wellness Center, HCA. Kathy Sickler's done a great job and our school psychologists and counselors, making sure that we had additional supports. There's the implementation of the morning meeting time and seminar, which has been critical to our implementation of social emotional learning curriculum and community building, team building activities for students. For staff, we're using our ESR funds for additional compensation for that extra work and extended planning time that it takes. So teachers can track that hour and get addition, the hours that they're spending and verified and approved by the principal. So it all has to go through a checks and balances process. But we definitely want to be sure that we value the work they're doing and, and compensate them for that. We've scaled back on some of the PD requirements, teachers spoke very adamantly about that. Like, we're just trying to manage and, and keep track of what we're doing now. Can we scale back on division-wide intensive professional development at this time? So we can still have our sanity. So you saw us do that with November 5th last week. We had a Friday early release, the rest of that day was supposed to be division-wide professional development. We did some mailbox staff development that we'd like them to review at their leisure, but we gave them back that time for workdays just so they could, you know, manage some of the workload a little bit better. We received our wellness grant again this year, so we can continue our morale boosters, pop-up lunches, turkey giveaway for Thanksgiving, farmer's market, all that stuff. So we're, we're, you know, trying to build in that positive wellness support that way. We're protecting leave due to quarantine and COVID absences. So a lot of times just out of, out of their control if they have, have to be forced to quarantine or a child is ill or a family member and things like that. So we are using some ESR funding to support our, our staff. That was something they really were adamant to ask for. And so that's been really positive too. And then master schedule adjustments to ensure that we're giving adequate breaks and planning time as best we can and making the best use of our time. I know there's been a lot of schools addressing this with calendar changes and changing days for, you know, more teacher workdays and things like that. I know quite a few surrounding districts in Northern Virginia. And also I think Warren and Shannon Dohr are making Thanksgiving week a full week off with Monday and Tuesday being workdays for teachers to try to catch up and give them just a little bit of a breathing room. I know my teacher advisory committee was really advocating for that. As a school administrator and parent, I step back and I have a few concerns about recommending that just because I don't know what the winter's going to do, I don't know what the pandemic's going to do. We have a certain amount of instructional days we need to have to make sure we get our state funding. You know, so, and we've done all these other things too that I know those districts didn't do. And they also have a huge shortage of staff that we don't have either. So it's different situations, I think, that are propelling that, but I know other people will see that and latch on and say, why don't we do that too? But that would need board, that's a board decision to look at that. We are looking at a date in March, should we get a grant that we're working on to do a whole staff team building day. So more about that later, but that, that would be a lot of fun and something we can do productively with that day. So thank you for your support, hopefully we can keep going and literally kick COVID out, out of here. That's what we're trying to do.
It's a great.
So any questions about any of that?
You talked about the schedule adjustments. I, I know that we've talked about, you know, mask breaks and structuring them in. Is that, I know that's more like, that's not the master schedule, but have you?
It's encouraged and different teachers are taking kids out at different times. But they're also surveying their class because then you have classes like, my daughter's class, I'm going to pick on her a little bit. And I said, well, how that, how's that going with, you know? And she said, well, the teachers will talk to us about mask breaks. But wow, my, my math class is like, we've got a lot to get done. She's like, I bring my water bottle, if I need to breathe, I take my mask off and I take, but I need that math. Like, oh my goodness, you're a nerd. But those kids to get out. So, I mean, you can take a mask break periodically individually as you need to, to take a drink and a breath. But getting outside is, is wonderful too. There's, it's just a balance between instructional needs, what the students want to do and the teachers. But they're, they're implemented. Every time I come by the schools, I see classes out walking every single time.
And is, it, my impression from what our student rep said a few months ago was that that was, you know, some teachers do it quite a bit and some teachers really don't opt to do that very much. Is that still the case or is there some kind of a?
We've asked, I know Mr. Seward at the high school has asked teachers to give them feedback about, you know, what's been difficult, how many, how often are you going out? I haven't heard complaints at all about the amount of time they're getting to go out. At the elementary, I see, see them walking quite a bit outside.
And did the 15 minutes, that was just at the elementary school, the daily 15?
No, we did that.
That was across the board? Okay, okay, cool. Yeah, yeah, just kind of, especially as it gets colder, you know, just like, and as it gets longer. You know, and as winter doesn't portend. You know, a lot more easy.
But bundle up and you can still go out.
Yeah. But yeah, I'm just curious about that, that piece and how it's progressing.
Yeah, we're still encouraging that as much as we can, you know.
With the, oh, excuse me. With the elementary age students now able to get vaccines, have we given any thought to, to sponsor a clinic?
Excellent question, I'm sorry I didn't put a slide up about that. We are working right now with Kathy Hatter and Ms. right now with Kathy Hatter and Ms. Anderson from VDH to set up a vaccination clinic. We had some questions, because there's different structures you can use for a 5 to 11 vaccine. So, I don't know if you saw, but we sent out a, a survey to our elementary parents to ask them what they prefer, gauge the interest to see if it's even worth doing the clinic, you know? We wanted to see how many. So, that survey is active right now. And also, something the state was talking to us about is removing the barrier that a lot of parents have after hours and working and all of these things. So, they said to look at possibly doing a school during-school hours clinic. If parents signed off, they can be there if they want to, and then the health department can do it during school hours, so that there's not a barrier. So, we're, we're asking the question, what do parents want to do with that? Because really, it's for, for them and their children. So, we're, we're getting those results. So, the options were, were, are you interested in exploring an in-school during-school hours option, or keep it the same way after-school evening hours?
Or even Saturday?
A weekend, yeah, that may work, too.
Yeah. You know, I, I think a lot of, some, some of the parents that I've talked to would welcome a clinic in the school, so that they don't have to take their kid to Culpeper or to Warrenton or someplace else to get the shot.
Right. So, I think that's the general consensus, that a local one would be beneficial. It's just whether we should do it while the child's at school or after hours. We have some, our health professionals have some concern with the in-school option without a parent there in case something were to happen, or there were any adverse reactions, or, you know.
It's a touchy situation.
So, it's, it's preferable to have the parent there in case something happens.
Sure. Like fear.
But what the state was pushing from an equity lens is, you know, especially if families in poverty, that's a huge barrier for traveling, and if they're already at school, and, you know, so. We're, we're surveying our folks to find out what exactly is beneficial for them. But we are planning a clinic, yes.
Would it be possible to do, you know, some offer in school and some parents bring them? Can you just choose one of the options, or could we, well, a lot of kids want to be with their parents when they get a shot and a few
Yeah. Whatever option they do, parents can be there at any time, of course. So, there was talk about maybe doing that last hour in the afternoon and extending out a little bit, or, but there's, there's some options.
Okay.
But it's basically on their timeline. The health department is the one who, who sets the threshold of time and how that has to work, so.
So, if it were during school hours, for example, a parent could say, I'm coming at
Yep.
2:30 to be with my child
Yes, exactly.
while she gets her vaccine.
Yeah.
One more thing.
Sure.
Since we're televised, basically, at this point in time, we're coming into winter, would it make any sense to ask Dr. Green to come and speak about the whole COVID thing in the schools and the Rappahannan/Rappahannock health system?
And he's You want him at the next board meeting?
Yeah.
We can invite him to see if he, he came to the supervisors a couple of times, too. Yeah, so.
I think it might be helpful for the community as well as for us.
You can certainly invite him.
Cool.
Anything else? Thank you, Dr. Green.
You're welcome.
Moving on to 5 dot 1, report of the board's representative.
Yes, I met with Brittany Dwyer yesterday morning, and here's my report. After school, started their second session on November 2nd, and they have 61 kids signed up, which is, they actually had to turn some people away who wanted to sign up after it started, because they're, they're so full, because in the staff versus student ratio, it's the most they've had. And about a quarter of them are taking the free transportation home as well. So, that's neat to be able to, we're offering that and working, working with them so well in that. And there are three tracks, and, and the program is free, the transportation is free, and the program is also free, which is, takes away another barrier from people participating. And, yeah, the three tracks this time are art, Lego education, and the sports one. So, that's great, that it's so successful. They did, the read program, I just, I talked about, we talked about last time, was set to launch in January, but due to COVID hesitancy of people, you know, senior citizens largely coming into classrooms, they're going to delay that launch probably till the spring, which is understandable. And Headwaters, for another reading-oriented program, they are, they have voted to conduct a three-year pilot study of Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, which is free books and literacy resources for 0 to 5-year-olds to go straight to families on a regular basis. And it sounds really lovely. I mean, it's really important, you know, getting books in the hands of kids before they're in school will help us as a school district to have kids love books and be familiar with them. Yeah, it's really neat. And it's a, yeah, it's a national funded program, yeah. And then, I think later this week, Headwaters is going to come to the high school for the, for a staff meeting and just reacquaint staff with the different grant programs that are available. And I did ask Brittany how much the, the grants so far, $5,261, a very precise number, in grants has been distributed pretty evenly between the elementary and the high school. So, this is all good news, and they're still in high gear even during the pandemic. So, it's great.
Thank you very much. MBGS there?
Yeah, we met on the, was it the 19th, I guess? I did it Zoom, I think you did it Zoom as well.
Yeah.
That was a long, long meeting. It was a joint meeting between the, the board and the academic advisory board as well, so it took a lot longer to do. The, the big, the big pullouts of it are basically the application packet for students, and I think we had that right, the thing here on the 3rd for kids, is that right? I think that's right. Anyway, we had an information session for students on the 3rd year, and I went ahead and made copies of this, because it's really interesting what youngsters have to go through just to apply to Mountain Vista. And I thought the board would like to see a copy of what their
Can you make copies for us?
What their stuff is doing. Let me go that way. One, two, three. Here. It's pretty impressive if you look through it. We, we got a report on the budget. We're in good shape, Mountain Vista Governor School budget-wise. The one thing, I had to leave early, because I have a cow out of the field, but the, the one thing I didn't find out, and maybe Dr. Gimsley knows it, I'm assuming our numbers are going to go back up to where they were last year for next year's enrollment.
As long as we have the applications.
That's the way we left it, right?
Yep, so we left it where we temporarily gave up two slots for the year to be bought by other districts. However, they, if we had the applicant, applicants for the following year, those would need to come back to us.
Right, okay. Did I miss anything?
You got it all.
And I, I was wondering, in terms of applying for Mountain Vista, we can, we can accept, my, my understanding, based on who's enrolled in the program currently, is that someone who is in a different school can apply and transfer after getting into Mountain, and become a Rappahannock school, if they're at a private school, for example, they can apply now, and they could have the chance of getting in and transferring to Rappahannock schools and Mountain Vista at the same time
Yeah.
for their, for their sophomore year. So, it's a great opportunity. It's a really good academic opportunity. A lot of people, you know, it's, I mean, I can speak from, it's just an amazing program. Yeah, so it's, it's a good thing to, for, for anybody to know that, that that's a possibility for someone who's a sophomore now, whether or not they're currently enrolled at our schools.
Or a rising sophomore.
A rising, a rising, it starts at, yeah, as a freshman now.
Freshman now.
Yeah, freshman now, ninth grader now can apply.
Yep.
We, we normally do a parent orientation as well, but that's going to be online again this year, and it's going to be on January 25.
All right, thanks. Moving on, there's an announcement here about the VSBA Capital Conference in Richmond in January. So, I guess we have another month to determine who's going to, Peter, so take a look at that and see if any of that interests you and whether you can, is in your schedule? All right. And, and of course, if you have interest, you let the clerk know, and we'll set that up. You've been before.
Yeah, I have, and I would be interested to go again.
And the next one on agenda is public comment. If there's anybody that would like to address the board this evening, if you could rise and come to the podium and tell us your name and your district. You want tonight? All right, moving on, is there a motion to approve the budget calendar as it was presented tonight?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Uben, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Grove, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Miss order, is there any new business? The next school board meeting, back in the same location, December the 14th. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the board convene in closed session for the following purpose, to discuss and consider the appointment of staff for professional positions, classified positions, coaching positions, dismissal of a classified position pursuant to Virginia Code Section
We have a motion from Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Uben, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. So, the board is going to retire into the conference room. We'll be back in
10 minutes.
10 minutes at the most, and if you wish to stay. At which time, we'll do any motions coming out of the closed session, personnel-related more than likely, and, and only those, and then we will adjourn. So, if we don't see you, thanks for coming. It's good to see you.